Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Mount Vernon City Council Meeting for July 28, 2021 to order. The time is now 7:01. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Items C is our roll call of council members. I'll ask the clerk to, please, call the roll for me.
Councilmember Beaton. Here. Councilmember Brock Smith.
Is excused tonight, sorry.
Councilmember Correia.
Here.
Councilmember Hudson.
Here.
Councilmember Holst.
Is excused this evening.
Councilmember Molinar.
Here.
Councilmember Morales.
Present.
All right. As we get going, I'm going to ask staff if they could speak directly into the microphone, and then also anyone that comes to the podium, please speak as close as you can to the microphone. And the reason being is with our air conditioning on the fritz, we've got mobile units here, but it's really hard to hear. I know you guys have great speakers, but we don't necessarily, so we want to hear you. So I might even ask you to speak closer, too. All right, thank you. Going on then in our consent agenda tonight, we have items A, B, and C, the approval of council meeting minutes, checks, direct deposits, wire transfers, and claims. Thank you. A motion by Mary and a second by Melissa. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Under Committee Reports tonight, first up is our Finance and Parks and Enrichment Services Committee Report, and I'm going to introduce Councilmember Mary Hudson. Mary.
Thank you, ma'am. Tonight, we had our meeting at 6:00 here in these chambers. We were, first of all, joined by Commissioner Janiky and George Kosovich from the Skagit County Health Department Housing Division. Had a great discussion about House Bill 1590, which allows affordable housing sales and use tax to be councilmatic or commissionermatic. Is that right? A good word? So we had a good discussion about that. Next up was Director Valeski from the Finance Department. We discussed the American Rescue Plan Act Spending Plan and 2021 Budget Amendment. The city was awarded over $9 million to be used through 2024, and a budget amendment is needed for the 2021 portion of the spending plan. Just a few things that the spending plan includes funding for is staff salary devoted specifically to COVID-19 pandemic efforts, revenue replacement in our library and parks departments, fiber optics, TV-10 upgrades for better use of the council chambers for Zoom meetings, and possibly having both in-person and Zoom capability, general facilities improvements, human resources, communications to our residents, and other things. We also were presented with the calendar for the 2020 budget, which they started with asking the directors for their budgets. They have from now until August 22 to present their first draft of their budget to the mayor and our finance director. So we will be starting to see some numbers come through to us here in the next couple months, so that we'll be making plans for what next year's going to look like in the city. We've got a few revenue updates on a few of our main revenue sources. Sales tax, we're currently at 67% of the budgeted annual amount. Traffic benefit district, we're currently at 73%. And real estate excise tax is at 86%. So they're all good indicators of a good economy. Next was Parks and Enrichment Services update from Director Jennifer Berner. The new pickleball courts up at Hillcrest Park will be, the official dedication ceremony will be August 8th, starts at 11:00, and then they're going to have exhibition games with some really, really fantastic pickleball players. I don't know if you've ever played, but it's a lot of fun, and it's good for all ages. So it's been well-used, and we're really happy that they came to us and really spearheaded this effort to get this pickleball courts moving here in the city. We also had an update on the 25th Street playground installation. It's nearing completion, and we hope it will be open by the middle of August. We have received, for special events, since we were obviously shut down, we have received so far 18 applications to host special events. Of the 18 we received, 13 were received on the 30th. So our staff is working feverishly to get people answers on those requests. So please be patient if you're one of those 13 applicants. Know that we're working to get these done. There are new regulations for vendors that are going into effect this year. We phased them in over the last couple years, and now, so there are more regulations for safety of patrons and vendors. Our Arts Commission update, we have, a public art brochure is being updated. We have new metal plaques installed for 10 art pieces. The Arts Commission is discussing possible banner pull project in downtown Mount Vernon for 2022, and they are developing an art piece database, which will be a very nice addition to the website if you like looking at the public art in our city. We have a new recreation coordinator that will be joining our staffs starting August 9th, so that's exciting. We're getting back into it, and it's awesome to see. We adjourned this meeting at 6:56.
Right. Thank you, Mary. Next up on our agenda is Committee Report for Development Services Committee, so I'll ask Councilmember Melissa Beaton for that report.
Thank you, ma'am. So Development Services, we met last Wednesday here at 6:00 PM, and we went over a number of items. First, we discussed the city's design standards review process. Principal Planner Rebecca Lowell provided a historical overview of the city's design standards. Council had a robust discussion around open space requirements and the differences between our Design Review Board and our Design Review Action Procedures and residential, single-family, multifamily versus commercial development consideration. That was a mouthful. Counsel, we then requested more information on the open space requirements and alternatives from adjacent similar communities, and some draft language examples. Then we discussed the multifamily, single-family, actual dwelling units created in the city versus our comp plan estimates. And our principal planner, Rebecca, again, presented a brief slideshow that provided the cause and effect of previously instituted council legislation on the production of market and affordable housing units currently in production and in the permitting pipeline. Then we discussed House Bill 1590, and as Councilmember Hudson mentioned, that allows for sales and use tax for affordable housing, 1/10 of 1%. Then we were briefed on the ARPA funding. That's the American Rescue Plan. The city will be getting in over $9 million over the next several years. We've already received $4.5 million, and that's earmarked for some very significant city infrastructure that we have neglected over the years through no one's fault other than that pesky funding. Then we were briefed by the mayor on a federal government's relations proposal that you'll see on the agenda tonight, that discusses the merits of contracting a federal state government relations professional that would inform and act on the city's behalf in Olympian in Washington, DC. And after all that, we adjourned at 9:30 PM.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Item B is our community comment time. At this time, I'd like to ask Chris Phillips if he'd come forward. The first one is our review of emails from the public. And so with our esteemed Peter Donovan being out today, Chris is going to pinch it for Peter.
Thank you, ma'am. Just for the record, I'm sure it is Olympic season, and everybody remembers the Tonya Harding incident, so I did take Peter out. He is out with a knee injury today, and I am in his place. I've been waiting a year to be able to do this, so thank you very much for allowing me to speak. This is a rather long letter from Mr. and Mrs. Larry and Carolyn Anderson, and it's dealing with the Fourth of July. Dear Mount Vernon City Council, I want to address the issue of illegal fireworks on the Fourth of July and the weeks before and after the Fourth. I was made aware that fines were increased for those caught lighting off illegal fireworks. This is a good start. However, it has proven to be ineffective for literally the entire month of July. In fact, the final straw that provoked me to write this letter happened last night when I witnessed someone setting off rockets in Little Mountain Park, where the forest is now so dry that trees are literally dying. If I call 911 every time I witness someone lighting off illegal fireworks, I would be calling daily. The illegal fireworks in my Hillcrest Park neighborhood were going off all day on the Fourth of July, and the neighbors one street east of my home on South 17th Street were still lighting rockets off over my home at 12:40 AM July 5th. It is usually the same six or seven residents within a block of my home lighting the mortars, rockets, and various explosives, not only on the week of July 4th, but New Year's Eve as well. I'm sure the police officers who were on duty that night of July 4th had their hands full. I did not see even one police car patrolling my neighborhood on July 4th. How can law enforcement write tickets that pack a higher fine when they aren't even available to write the tickets? Three years ago, I had a vacant field next to my home, which has since been developed by Piazza Construction. The residents on the northwest corner of South 16th Street and Hillcrest Parkway were lighting rockets directly over the field, catching the grass on fire. I had to put the fire out with the garden hose and a bucket of water. I called 911, and the police arrived about 10 minutes later. They spent less than a minute talking to the lawbreakers about the fireworks, and as soon as the police drove around the corner, the fireworks continued. I called 911 again. The police never came back. Luckily, my father was in the Mount Vernon Fire Department for 34 years and always stressed to me the importance of being prepared for irresponsible neighbors on the Fourth of July, because I'm betting if I called the fire department about the grass fire, they probably wouldn't have had the resources to even show up. A couple of years before that, a family caught a fence of shrubbery on fire at Tom Meyer's home on South 16th Street. Then came the fire trucks, more illegal fireworks. The Mount Vernon Police Department obviously cannot even begin to keep up with the residents setting off illegal fireworks the entire month of July. The amount of taxpayer dollars that are spent to put out the fires caused by fireworks would be better spent elsewhere. I think it's time to follow Bellingham's example and make all consumer fireworks illegal in Mount Vernon. I have spoke with several neighbors and friends who reside in Mount Vernon, and I have not had a single person disagree with me on this. The Mount Vernon City Council needs to take action and make this a top priority. The signs posted all over town aren't helping. If you doubt anything I have written, I would invite each and every one of the members of Mount Vernon City Council to bring a lawn chair over to my home on South 16th Street and sit in my front yard next year on July 4th, so you can see just how ineffective the current city ordinance is. I'll have my garden hose ready to go. Thank you, Larry and Carolyn Anderson.
Chris, that was the only one, correct?
That's the only one.
All right. Thank you. And for the public, he was kidding about Peter, so. All right. All right. Agenda item two, under Community Comments, is our public comment time. I'm going to ask for a list. Okay. So would I just let them, just let them? So we've got some, we have some things to work out on public comment tonight. So we do have a closed public hearing that's, well, we have a few things. We have one public hearing that will be Agenda Item, sorry, Agenda Item A, and that is an open public hearing. We also have Agenda Item D, which is what's called a closed public hearing, and that is actually governed by state law on who is allowed to speak at a closed record public hearing. It's nothing that the city tries to impose. And so there are folks that are signed up for public comment, and some are parties of record that would be allowed to make comment about the rezone, and some are not. And so our city attorney is here and our planning director, so I'm going to try and do this as fairly as I can and explain it as well. So, okay. So first up is Tom, and I'm going to, sorry, Astella? Asteller? Apologize. All right. So they are parties of record. They're, you're welcome to speak in public comment or at the time of the public hearing.
That would be better.
Okay. Time of the public hearing. All right. So then we have Barbie Andrew, who wanted to speak about the rezone, although because they're not listed as a party of record, we could take general comments about land use, but any comments specifically about the rezone are not allowed, which I apologize for that. So let's see. Barbie is, oh, okay. We're going to do our best to comply with law here and also hear from you, so. Well, Barbie Andrew.
Yes. My name is Barbie Andrew.
Thank you.
I live on 328 North 30th Street.
Okay.
And yes, I am a little late to the table here about the rezone in my neighborhood. I live on North 30th, and the parcel behind me is the one with the rezone that they're having. And it looks like I missed every deadline. I was vacationing. It's summer. People are doing things, and the last thing you want to do is go through a lot of documents. But since I got back from vacation, I have been going through a lot of documents. It says that from the SEPA environmental checklist, it says that the proposed preliminary plat is to create up to 68 single-family residential lots. And they talk about how it affects division, but all of those people are going to be coming down.
Okay.
So what we're having here is, I'm going to be, I'm going to try not to be technical and lawyerly, although I'm the city attorney. There's two different actions going on. This one about the rezone is like a judge sitting before a defendant. It's called quasi-judicial, and the property owner has rights to have all the information presented on the rezone, presented at the open record hearing. And that is why this is what's called the closed record hearing, in which the city council is sitting like a judge wearing robes, and they have to make a decision based on the record that was developed at the hearing examiner. So what's limited towards testimony tonight, because it's not a legislative hearing, talking about, for example, fireworks, but a specific property and property rights. So what's allowed tonight is just people who've already spoken, and it's already been part of the record, to restate their concerns that the council already has. But new evidence or new testimony is prohibited by law because it is a closed record hearing.
New testimony.
So like, it's like they've already had a trial, and it would be introducing new people that hadn't been a chance to speak toward the hearing examiner, and that's where we're at.
You're my representatives, whether or not we're talking about something that's had a trial before or after, so should you not be able to hear from me?
In this particular formal setting, it is not allowed by state law. That's what we're bound to uphold.
Okay. Let me phrase it a little differently.
Okay.
When people are coming down North 30th Street, they're barreling down the street. My tree was taken out by a car a few years ago. We've had at least six trees taken out by cars on our street and a mailbox. Thankfully, we have the trees, so nobody's house was injured, and nobody has died yet because the speed limit is supposed to be 25. So even if they're going 35, 40 miles an hour, the trees aren't quite that big to kill them. But it's going to come to a point where they will be that big to kill them. We also have a lot of deer in our neighborhood. These deer like to cross roads. They are in your front yard. They're in the field behind our house. There's been at least three fawns that people have seen, a beautiful buck, because it just went by my back fence the other day. And it's amazing living there, but it also causes hazards to people driving quickly down our road. And so I guess that's kind of the way I can get around your little rules. So I ask that when you do make any decisions, that you think about those things. And I also ask that you think about how you can make my street safer, because they said, no, you can't have any speed bumps. That's not possible. But it's just getting worse. And I think it was like four days they put up the speed limit sign telling people, and that did slow them down a little bit, but now they're just.
That didn't help much. Something needs to be done.
But it happened right again. So thank you so much for hearing me. I think I got around your rules, so thank you.
Yeah, so I want to ask, it's still.
No, please, sir. I will call on you in a minute. Okay. Barbie, thank you so much. You know, they are state laws, so we are obliged to uphold the law, but you did an excellent job in bringing forth concerns.
Thank you.
In a great ways. Thank you. All right. Antoinette Caskey. Again, it's about the rezone, so if you're comfortable, you can certainly approach.
I'm yakking all the time.
And perhaps in general, describe what you would like council to consider when they're making decisions.
I would like to see our street a safe place for children, walkers, dogs, and wildlife. Every time there has been an accident, I've lived in my home for 17 years, there have been 12 very bad totaled accidents with drivers at the wheel either drunk or stoned on drugs. They are driving so rapidly that they lose control of their wheel when it comes to a small hill that actually ends on East Fur. And then they jump the curb, they wind up in somebody's yard. I can remember one incident just a year ago or two years ago, when a vehicle came coming from, traveling from north to south, actually jumped a curb on the right side of the street, jumped onto a neighbor's yard, jumped onto another neighbor's yard, and wound up in front of Barbie's house. And all these cars have been totaled. None of these drivers have been going the legal speed limit. They're probably going anywhere between 40 to 50 miles an hour at times. They reach our street and they gun it, and I mean gun it, we can hear it. The last accident we had, our major accident, was July 9th, and that car flipped right over in a driveway of one of my neighbors, as well as Barbie's. I live right next door to Barbie. The gentleman that's going to come after me, Curtis, lives across the street from me. We are merely moving around in our yard, in our house, and we hear this commotion and this startling bang, and right away, we know it's another accident. And what we are really fearful of is somebody will be killed. It's just a matter of time for the right place and the right time to do this because there are no enforcements. We have pleaded and discussed among ourselves, why aren't there speed bumps? Not only do our cars and our neighbors use this access road, we also have buses, and we're talking school buses, we're talking dump trucks, we're talking moving vans. It's just a constant succession of vehicles going up and down. If you add more vehicles to the mass, we won't even be able to cross the street to go to our mailboxes, let alone say hello to an ailing neighbor, as it may be. So these are the concerns that we all have. We also have several little kitties that ride their trikes and bikes and whatnot up and down the sidewalk. We have moms with strollers. I'm a dog walker myself. From the time I get up in the morning at 6:00, at least 9:00 or 8:00 o'clock in the evening, it's a constant flow of people with their dogs, many outside of our neighborhood that come up the street because they are assuming it's a safe area. Little do they know, it is not. And it's gotten to the point where animals feel like posting, drive at your own risk. It is that bad. And so, you know, I am advocating for the safety of our public, for the citizens of Mount Vernon, for our neighborhood, and anyone else that might be concerned about a person's welfare, because that's what's at stake right now, is the person, a person may get fatally injured the way the driving conditions are on 30th, North 30th.
So I just had to clarify, did I?
I didn't hear you say your address, and so I just wanted to know.
I'm 322 North 30th Street.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to kind of visualize when you were.
You're welcome. I'm right next door to Barbie.
Right. Excellent job, Antoinette. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your concern.
All right. Next, on Melissa Cecili-Nally, that is a person of record, so I'll ask for you to speak at the public hearing time. Okay? And then Kelly Lutz. Again, that's not allowed, but you're welcome to come up and make some general comments about concerns with traffic or, okay. Thank you, Kelly.
My name is Kelly Aldrich Lutz, and I live at 424 North 30th Street. And these two ladies have voiced a lot of the concerns I would have shared, but I would just like to say, I live in the cul-de-sac, so oftentimes, we don't get included in information that affects the rest of North 30th Street, even though we end up being kind of the hub of where most of the accidents take place. And they are happening during the day. These aren't, not that in the middle of the night accidents would be better, but I'm one of the mothers that they're talking about. I have my children. I was watching my watch to make sure I'm going to be home in time for my childcare to leave. So I have children. We're active out in the neighborhood. We walk every day. We have dogs. We have special needs kids in the neighborhood. And that road has been unsafe for a very long time. I had asked for crosswalk lights to be installed at the opposite end of North 30th, where the North Division was, and that was denied for the very same reasons. It kind of starts on that, either on North Fur or on Division, and it just kind of continues to be this racetrack sort of area. They drag race up that hill in the evening time, side by side up the hill, and there are lots of coyotes, deer, things that, the reasons why I moved there, thinking that it would be a great place, and it has been a great place, to go back to the pond. We go sledding there in the wintertime. There's tons of wildlife, and we have excellent neighbors. But everybody who goes through treats it just like it's the freeway. The last accident that happened on the 9th was like at 5:00, 5:30. We were all eating dinner on the back porch, and we came out, and this car, smoke everywhere. The woman, I guess, had been intoxicated. She was trapped under the car, so I see my neighbors trying to pry her out, and other neighbors running to go get fire extinguishers and trying to keep our kids inside so they're not seeing the trauma that's going on in the neighborhood. And unfortunately, my kids have gotten to the point where it's just another accident. Like, we've had them on the morning of Thanksgiving, we've had them, like, they happen very frequently. And the ones that don't collide with the tree, there's lots of near misses. Like, if you drive through our neighborhood, you can see like where cars have taken out concrete, you know, like where there's skid marks basically of the bottom of the car scraping against the sidewalk. It's just really, I can't imagine it would get any better if more houses were built around us. So I guess that's, anything else I would say, I've unfortunately missed my opportunity to share. But I appreciate the time and at least being able to share that. And if nothing else can be done, it would be really, I mean, I've been present when my neighbors have asked the police on duty who have been there responding to accidents, like, why can't we have speed bumps? And honestly, like, it's been very dismissive. And I know they're not the ones who get to make that decision, but when you're sitting there and you're seeing this happen, and you have two small children who you'd like to think are safe playing outside of their front, in their front yard, it's really disappointing to see police officers be dismissive of like, okay, well, here we are again. You saw where this woman ended up. It's like 10 feet from my neighbor's front door, and thank God they weren't in the front yard when they came through, because they knocked the tree down. So anyway, speed bumps and a light that allowed us to safely cross the street into our neighborhood would be great. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. So those are on the list of who signed up, but is there any other person that would like to, you're welcome to come up?
Yeah.
So if you come to the podium, I'll ask you to please state your name and your city of residence.
My name's Curtis Sowers. I live at 317 North 30th Street in Mount Vernon. And there's really not much more to add to what the other people have said before. And there's really not much more to add to what the other people have said before me, but it is ridiculous what's going on that street. My wife has to go out and warn the little kids across the street, hey, get back in your yard, because it's just so unsafe around there now. And, you know, like they said, there's been trees taken out. And my neighbor right next to me, his car was parked on the road, got rear-ended, totaled his truck, took his tree out, and that was a couple of years ago. So other than that, I really can't add anymore, but it's just, it's really unsafe. Thank you.
Thank you, Curtis. Right. So those that are identified, you're welcome to speak in the public hearing upcoming. So, thank you. All right. And now that we've got some names and addresses, we're going to figure out how we can have some city staff come out and follow up on some of these questions and see what we can do. All right. All right. If there's no other public comment, we're going to move on. Okay. All right. Item C is council member comments. Any council member comments? Okay. Moving on, I feel like I'm not speaking in my, I do not have a mayor's report prepared. Item E is a committee agenda request. Any committee agenda requests? Okay. All right. We have no unfinished business. Under new business tonight, item A is a public hearing regarding local government IT security assessment. And our information services director, Kim Kleppi, is here to introduce this item and our guests.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. We are having tonight a public hearing on a cybersecurity audit we have performed by the state of Washington. I originally signed up for this with them three or four years ago, and there's been a long list as they go through cities and counties through the state. And then finally, at the beginning of this last year, Aaron Munn from the State Auditor's Office called me and tried to get us on the list for 2020, but then COVID hit. And so we delayed it through the year, through the year until, I think we finally did the engagement letter, October 27th of this year, to start the audit. And then we started our meetings in November, meeting, getting introductions with things. Then in January, started providing them documentations, policies, procedures, how we track things. And then getting to the point where we did testing on our network with like penetration tests and Nessus testing to test how we do in performance from that schedule, plus how we document and schedule everything else. With that, in the audit, we had here today Keith Drake, our lead auditor from the state of Washington. And then we also have Michael Germstad, the supervisor of the auditors from the state of Washington. So they made the, one made the trek from Olympia and one came from Boeing. So here to, we published the report last week on the 19th of July. And because we published the report for this audit, it's required to have a public hearing on it. And tonight, to present that published report, is Keith Drake from the state of Washington.
All right. Welcome, Keith. I'll have you speak as close to the microphone as you can so we can hear.
Good evening. So I'm Keith Drake. I'm an IT auditor with the Office of the Washington State Auditor. As Kim was saying, we performed an IT security audit of the city of Mount Vernon's IT department that started in December of 2020. And the public report was issued on July 19th earlier this month. The report is available on our website at the Office of the Washington State Auditor at sao.wa.gov. I'd especially like to recognize the city's IT leadership for being a participant in this audit and the great willingness of their team to provide support, particularly Kim Kleppi and Scott Warley, who are always ready to help us with anything that we needed. We found that Kim and Scott's contributions to the city of Mount Vernon's diverse IT portfolio to be impressive, and we think the city is at great benefit for their service. I'd like to mention this audit was conducted in accordance with generally accepted government audit standards. The audit was supported under the 2005 Initiative 900, which allows for the funding of performance audits. Consequently, this audit was performed at no charge to the city of Mount Vernon. One of, like Kim was saying, one of the requirements of Initiative 900 is the public report is to be featured in a public hearing, which is why I'm speaking here today. I am pleased to present the audit report titled, "Opportunities to Improve the City of Mount Vernon's Information Technology Security." Cybersecurity is a pressing topic and is gaining ever increasing amounts of importance and attention in today's technology-driven world. Because of this, we offer local governments the opportunity to participate in performance audits for IT security. The city of Mount Vernon is aware of the importance of cybersecurity, and so they volunteered to participate in this audit a few years ago. The audit looked at the city's IT security from two perspectives. First, we evaluated the city's policies, procedures, standards against leading practices to evaluate if IT security is implemented consistently. To do this, our team first identified the Center for Internet Security as CIS Controls as our source of leading practices. These practices are challenging, but they're used to help identify its areas of security strengths as well as opportunities for growth. Our evaluation of the city's alignment with these controls included interviews, documentation review, and observing their IT procedures. For our second approach, we looked for specific vulnerabilities in the IT environment at the city of Mount Vernon. For that, our internal team of IT security practitioners performed a series of technical tests designed to find vulnerabilities and find areas to improve the security posture of the city of Mount Vernon. Additionally, we brought in a team from the firm Imagine Security to perform highly technical penetration tests on the city of Mount Vernon's systems. Imagine Security performs vulnerability testing on a variety of industries, including government and global Fortune 500 companies. Their focus was to identify potential vulnerabilities in the city's systems and provide guidance for addressing identified vulnerabilities. The scope of work for Imagine Security included a variety of technical tests, scans, and analysis. We worked collaboratively with Kim and Scott to scope the work in these areas. I'd like to point out that the IT security audit is always going to find issues. IT security is a complex subject and is subject to frequent changes in the threat landscape and as well as ongoing propagation of new risks and threat vectors. So our audit found that the city's policies and procedures partially align to leading practices. We also identified some technical issues. However, like I stated before, Kim and Scott were highly proactive in their attitude in remediating these issues. As noted in the second paragraph of the audit results section, our audit's results statement is very high level. The reason for this is this is an IT security audit that's meant to find areas for improvement for the city of Mount Vernon's IT security posture. And therefore, it's protected by RCW 4256420, which exempts the details of a security assessment from public disclosures. So I won't be going into any more detail now about those results. We recommend that the city continue its efforts to remediate the risks that were identified during the audit and continue to use guidance from leading practices to work on developing policies, procedures, and standards that will help the city ensure they maintain a strong security posture. I'd like to thank the city for participating in the audit. And again, I'd like to thank Kim and Scott for their professionalism and their help with moving the audit along. They were great to work with. Does anybody have any questions?
All right. Any questions for Keith? I'll remind council, we'll have a public hearing after this, and then we'll be adjourning into an executive session to talk a little bit more details of what can be shared, so. All right. There's no questions at this time? We'll go ahead and open the public hearing regarding local government IT security assessment. If there's anyone that would like to speak about IT security, you're welcome to step to the podium. All right. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing regarding local government IT security assessment. So thank you, Keith, for that. All right. Item B is our executive session. Kevin, do you want to call that?
Sure.
Or would you like me to read that?
I invite the mayor, members of city council, and Leo council, and the appropriate officials to enter into an executive session to discuss information regarding the infrastructure and security of computer and telecommunications networks, security and service recovery plans, security risk assessments, and security test results to the extent that they identify specific system vulnerabilities and other information that have made public may increase the risk to the confidentiality, the integrity, or the availability of agency security or to information, technology, infrastructure, or assets. Pursuant to RCW 4230, 4230, 110A subsection II, estimated time, 20 minutes. After 20 minutes, we'll convene a regular session and open it back up to the public.
All right. So with that, we're going to adjourn into executive session at 7:41. So what this means is I'll ask the folks that are in the audience to exit the room. If our staff could make sure there's plenty of chairs for folks, whether it's in the lobby or maybe in the multipurpose room, that would be excellent. So thank you that, for staff that would be going out. And then we'll have our IS securities, our IS staff remain, as well as our state auditors, so.
...
I will call the city council meeting back into regular session. It is now 8:07. We're back to our regular agenda. Item C is the approval of an agreement with Johnston Group. And so Chris Phillips is going to introduce this particular item.
Hi. Good evening, Council, Mayor. As you may recall, the city of Mount Vernon has embarked on an exciting multi-use infrastructure project to create the Mount Vernon Library Commons. This project will be an economic development catalyst for the downtown Mount Vernon area and fill a number of unmet community needs and priorities. The city has identified $33.3 million of a $45 million projected budget and is seeking federal funding to help fill the outstanding fund balance. The Johnston Group work would be focused on supporting the funding requests that have already been made and to identify and secure funding for the Mount Vernon Library Commons project. Potential funding opportunities for Mount Vernon would include federal appropriations, American Rescue Plan funding, federal RACE grant, transportation and infrastructure bills, and broadband funding, as well as Opportunities Zone tax credit programs, restoration of federal income tax deduction for state and local taxes, and a community development block grant funding. The Johnston Group proposes to complete the scope of services outlined in the proposal for a fixed monthly retainer of $3,000, starting upon execution of a contract. Either the city of Mount Vernon or the Johnston Group may terminate this contract within 30 days, written notice, at any time, for any reason. Both parties may modify the scope in terms of this engagement upon mutual agreement at any time as well. The motion before you is to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Johnston Group for government relation services.
Council, Jake Johnston is here tonight, and so I'd like to invite him to come up to the podium if he'd just like to introduce himself. And if there's any questions for Council, Jake is here to talk to you.
Thank you, Mayor, and nice to see you all, Council. Sorry you can see half of my face, but that's how we do it in my family. It's great to be here tonight. Thank you for considering the proposal from me. I guess the mayor invited me to come up and give you a few background words about the Johnston Group, about the work we do for cities here in the state of Washington, and then answer any questions that you have, either about the lobbying proposal, about what's happening in DC right now, or about what we do for other cities and public entities in the state of Washington. I'll be quick. I know you've had a long night. The Johnston Group, this is our 13th year that we've been in business as a sole lobbying firm. I've been working as a lobbying consultant since 2001, after working on Capitol Hill back in Congress for about a decade. And I formed the Johnston Group with the specific intent of representing medium and smaller-sized public entities in the state of Washington, and that is 100% of our client base. We work with cities and public hospitals right now exclusively. In the past, that's expanded to include PUDs, some water districts, and some other public entities as well. But right now, it's cities and public hospitals. And really, the core of our business and the core of what we do is really play matchmaker between programs at the federal level and opportunities at the local level. And our job is to really be part of the project team, to match the city with these opportunities, and put the city in the best position at the right time, in the right place, in the right amount, to the right people, to make the best case for your project. I mean, it's, I wish it was more complicated than that, but that's really what it's all about. And with that, I'm really proud of the longstanding relationships that we've built with our cities. And with that, I'm really proud of the longstanding relationships that we've built with our cities. We don't lose a lot because we tend to do good work together. And I love Mount Vernon. I'm eager to be considered by you all this evening. I had the privilege of representing Skagit Regional Health for almost 14 years, and I just can't speak enough about what I think about this city, and the great coffee you have, and how I spend way too much money at your co-op. And I'll leave it at that.
Any questions for Jake? Melissa?
Just a quick comment. We've heard good things about you. We are two-thirds of the way there for funding. If you can bring it home for us, this will be money well spent.
All right. Any other questions for Jake?
Just a follow-up comment. You're two-thirds there because the city's put forward a great project, and the mayor's leadership and the city's leadership. You're asking me to really kind of be part of the project team here, to help be some extra engine power in this process. And with that, I'm happy to be a part of the team, but frankly, the project speaks for itself at this point. We just need to marry it to the right opportunities that exist for it back in DC.
And the credit definitely goes to the mayor and her staff. She has been working very hard. There's no other comments. I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to enter into the agreement with the Johnston Group for government relation services.
Say again. Thank you. Motion by Melissa, and a second by Iris. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side? Motion carries. Thank you. Iris, did you have a question?
No, just a quick comment. We are just ready for that. We are so excited to see this project come true. And thank you very much, and all of us, we are so excited to see this can happen.
Great.
Thank you very much.
We are ready for that.
I'm smiling right now.
Well, and I want to thank council, too. You know, Jake had given some guidance to me. He was also, I'll tell you, responsible for, I think, responsible in my mind, for us being able to finish the College Way widening under I-5. On a trip we were at with the hospital, I was talking about that project, and so he was the one that sent an email pointing out the earmark reallocation of earmarks. So we were able to take advantage of that little bit of information, and we were able to finish that project. So that was, I credit Jake with that.
Thank you, mayor. I forgot about that.
All right. Thank you so much.
Good night, everyone.
All right. Item D tonight is our closed record public hearing about a site-specific rezone for parcel P-119008. And I'll ask Rebecca Lowell, our staff, to come and present this particular item. Rebecca.
All right. I want to make sure I'm standing close enough here.
Yeah, talk, talk as loud as you can.
All right. Thank you, mayor, and good evening, city council. As the mayor stated, the agenda item I have before you is for a rezone. The legal owner of this property, it's an LLC called Glenmore, but the gentleman who is the principal of that LLC is named Sammy Deol, which is why I just put the Deol rezone in there as well. So tonight, you're asked to hold a closed record public hearing and make a decision on this site-specific rezone. This is a 22-and-a-half acre site located north of Division, and it's east of the East Division and 30th Street intersection. And of course, this is the property that the city sold in 2018, so it should look familiar to some of you. So I have an aerial map of the site up here on your screen. North is up towards the top of the screen. You can see East Division Street abuts the south boundary of the site. And I've identified 30th Street, and then the Skagit Orchards subdivision that's located to the west of the site, and the Thunderbird neighborhood to the east, just to orient you to where we are, where we are in the city with this one. This next map is a copy of our zoning map. So you can see on the map, I've outlined, actually more than just the site, but the site is the, was precisely detailed in the map that you just saw. But on this map, you can see that this site is currently zoned public, but it has an existing comprehensive plan designation of single-family medium. And what that means is that this site was supposed to, and is intended to be, zoned single-family residential. And actually, having it inconsistent is a problem because it's a GMA issue for us, a Growth Management Act issue. We are required to have comprehensive plan designations and zoning designations that are consistent with each other. So for this site in its existing condition to be consistent, it would have also needed to have a comp plan designation of public, which it does not. So the proposed designation is the single-family residential with a maximum density of 4.54 dwelling units an acre, or what you see in shorthand, what we know as the R1 4.0 district. I put this in your presentation tonight, just to show you what the densities surrounding the site are. You can see to the north and to the east of the site, or a portion of the east of the site, are neighborhoods that are zoned R1 3.0. And what that means is that they have a maximum density of 3.23 dwelling units an acre versus the R1 4.0, which is primarily to the west and the south of the site. It's that brighter yellow color that's in there. So really, between the two designations, there really honestly isn't much of a difference between the 3.23 or the 4.54. And then, of course, we've got the, Skagit PUD's water tank is also designated as public that's on the other side of Division to the southeast of the site. It's the only other green parcel that you see up there. So there were several comment letters. Of course, those were included in your packets for this evening, so you've got those. But I always like to give you just an overview, and I know I'll probably miss some issue, but in general, consistent themes that were in the letters in your packets included concerns about the existing wildlife and vegetation on the site, existing wetland that we know is on the site, stormwater impacts and downstream impacts associated with stormwater, and that this would be detrimental to the surrounding neighborhoods. So in response to some of these concerns, I really, it's that we note that future development of the site will be required to comply with all applicable federal, state, and city critical area and stormwater regulations. As I stated earlier, the existing comprehensive plan designation and the zoning is currently not consistent. That is something that does need to be fixed. And thinking back when this property was sold in 2018, I'm speculating, but I know I always assumed that this was being sold because we knew that there would be a rezone at some point. This was an issue that we had identified early on and anticipated this site being developed. Impacts to nearby neighborhoods, of course, have, there's a number of different ways that that will be mitigated. One is going to be with our design standards, landscape buffers, and other regulations that council has adopted to ensure the neighborhood compatibility. In addition, I'll also note there were quite a few comments, and I think just, I would say, a general misunderstanding with regard to the SEPA environmental review that occurred with this. So just in case, and I'm sure you read the comments that were in your packets, it's so important to remember that we are not discussing the development this evening. The environmental review was called a non-project environmental review, and so it goes through a little bit different process. There's different information that's required because we are not evaluating the future development of this site. Really, this is a change in a land use designation, and there will be, when the developer comes in and submits their subdivision application, they are going to be put through and be required to comply with that laundry list of regulations that you all hear me talk about, from critical areas to stormwater, to those neighborhood transitions. That is when we evaluate those impacts and condition those. It is not done when we're going through our non-project review. So I always, the few neighbors that I have spoken to, I think, did feel a little bit better when I made sure they knew that we are well aware of where the existing wetland is located, how big it is, and that the developer cannot, by law, go in and just fill that entire wetland. That's actually a federal regulation that will detail how much of the wetland they can fill, so I do expect that they'll fill small portions of it. But most of that wetland will be protected, as is required by, again, federal, state, and local codes. So with that, we staff finds that the procedural and substantive standards for this application have been satisfied. The hearing examiner held an open record public hearing on June 21st and recommended council approval of this application. And as such, staff is also recommending this rezone be approved that would change the designation of the subject parcel from public to single-family residential.
Okay. Any questions for Rebecca before we open the closed record public hearing? Okay. I'm going to thank our members of the audience that signed up for their patience, so I'm going to ask if Tom and/or Diane Ostheller would like to come forward at this time.
Hi.
Hi there.
Everybody seen the aerial map of the area? Everybody's aware of that?
Yes.
Well, I'm going to show you again. I'm kind of concerned about this, and I'm kind of concerned where you guys live. Four to one? Three to one. Where do you like that? Where does the wildlife live? Well, they live here now, but once this is gone, there won't be wildlife. But in this area, with all the trees and all the coverage, lots of them, some stuff is very important. Eagles, dragonflies, frogs. But you know, that's a nice neighborhood. Where are you going to park your boat, your RV, and your motorcycle, and your two cars and your pickup? On the street? Well, not over here. Over here you'd get it. You can live like, you know, a lot easier living over here than it is here. And I would like to make the area zone that is next to the three-to-one acreage to remain three-to-one, and the acreage down here.
Tom, could I ask you, if you speak into the mic, we get it as the recording for the public record.
Okay.
So if I could ask you to speak into the mic. Thank you.
I do have a question. How big is the wetlands that's set aside? How many acres?
I'm sorry. If the mayor wants me to answer a question, I can do that.
Right. This is just in time for a public comment. We're happy to make all of that record available to you. Again, this is a...
So you're not going to tell me how big the wetland is?
That's not fair, and that's not what I said. We're happy to give any public documents about this project to the public. What we're evaluating is not the project tonight, it's evaluating the rezone. And so we're happy to get all that mapping to you if you'd like.
I would like.
Okay.
Next thing, these poor ladies that live on 30th that have all of this traffic there, I see in this information that I got from you guys is that the traffic will be on Division. So I guess there won't be any traffic on 30th or LaVenture, or, because it'll be on Division. The Division can handle it, it says. It doesn't say anything about any such work done for analysis of the increased traffic. 68 houses is a lot of houses. What's that, 150 cars? Boats, RVs, motorcycles, all, you know? And I don't see anything about noise pollution. 160 houses? What kind of noise is that? I mean, lawn mowers, leaf floors, pressure washers? That's a lot of noise, and a lot of pollution. You know, they've got kids and barking dogs, you know? And so if we can make that a little bit more livable by making bigger lots, I think everybody would benefit, except, you know? Is there, I guess, you probably won't answer this either, is there any provision for off-street parking in this? And will I get information on?
So there has not been a submittal of a project at all. Again, this is simply a land use designation. So once a project is actually submitted, that's when it goes through formal review and is conditioned for a lot of different studies. So if that helps you with the information.
Okay. So we'll get that information if we're on the list?
What we could do is, for folks that have signed up as parties of record, we're happy to kind of push out information when we receive it, and when there's opportunity for comment or participation.
Okay.
Yeah, happy to do that.
Okay. So there'll be another chance to come down here and do this all over?
Yes, yes, because tonight is only an actual land use designation. It's not anything about the project that would occur.
Right, okay. This is just to decide if it's four or three?
Correct. It's a, yes, correctly.
And is there, is there a problem with making it part four and part three?
That's what the council will decide.
Okay. So you guys are going to decide that?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. It gets confusing, I know. Okay, Cecilia...
If you'd leave it alone, it wouldn't be confusing at all, and you guys could all be home.
All right. Cecilia and Nellie, thank you for your patience. Please come on up.
Do I need to state my address and all that, or you guys already have it?
I couldn't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I need to, like, state my address and all that?
We've got it on the record, so that's fine, yeah.
Okay. So I'm very thankful for some of your clarification on the property, and you almost had me satisfied, except for the fact that we're talking about filling in the wetlands, some portion of it. So much of this has not been defined. That's why we're here. This is why we're concerned. We completely understand that there's a need for housing here. There's a need for housing everywhere, and we're not trying to stop this project from going forward, but we're trying to make sure that you guys understand that certain things need to be protected. Our home values need to be protected, the wildlife, the wetlands, they need to be protected, the safety of the neighborhood needs to be protected. Division, yes, can totally handle it, but what do you have on FER? You have one of the biggest parks in Mount Vernon, if not the biggest park. So this means this housing development is now going to go down 30th to get to FER, to get to, is it Baker View Park? No, I'm drawing a blank. But to get to that park there on FER and 30th, because that's where the YMCA center is. And usually, they come from College Way, but when you put a massive housing development like this with access to a park, they're going to start driving through our communities. They're going to start making our areas not safe anymore. So while I can't, I guess, specifically talk about development, there were questions that still just aren't, I've yet to have an answer to, and I've, you know, written many things, of why does this whole parcel have to be rezoned? Why cannot a portion of this parcel remain public? That would satisfy the community by getting new housing. This would satisfy all the homeowners in the area who are worried about, you know, now they can pass sugar to a neighbor, when right now, we have trees that protect our privacy. We can sit on our back porch without having to talk to a neighbor if we don't want to because of the trees, and we get to enjoy the wildlife, we get to hear the sounds of the frogs, we get to, you know, see the new animals come every spring. I sent pictures of two owls that are just what would be the south side of my property that are nesting right now, and there is six new nests. So there's going to be, all these wonderful things in our area are going to be taken away. So we're not asking that this stops, that that's not what we're asking. We just want part of this parcel to remain the same. So how do we, how do we find a happy medium? How do we keep us safe? How do we keep us, the community, satisfied? How do we allow this builder to help develop the community? I mean, this decision is ultimately yours, and we have this much of a say, but we elect you guys to be here, to be our voice, and to do what's right by us. Can we put the map back up? Can I touch this? Can I touch this to put the map back up here? Is that okay?
Rebecca, do you mind? I don't know if it's a touchscreen, so sorry.
Just so that everyone can kind of see what I'm talking about. The second one down, yeah, that one. Yeah. So this is the area, I'm going to be touching the mouse, I hope that's okay. I think I paid for it. This is the area to where the animals are breeding right now. This is the wetland that has potential to be filled. We all have privacy, all of these people. These, this is the road that's of concern for the traffic. When you come down this road, it'll take you to Fur up here, and here's your park. So this means that all of these people are now going to drive down this road, maybe even cut through Comanche if they don't want to wait. Now they're passing my house, going down this way. These roads are not big enough to handle the traffic of four houses per acre, maybe not even three per acre. But why can't the city say this cannot be developed? This area, and that's in the map. That's the one, the map that I made that has little red lines crossed. This yes makes it to where there's going to be less available houses in Mount Vernon, but it checks all the boxes of satisfying everybody. The city gets what they want, more housing, more income. The builder gets what he wants, he gets an income out of it, and we, the neighbors, get to keep our privacy and help get to keep traffic down and the safety of our community. I mean, we, we've already been screwed a little by the $385,000 loss that the city took on selling this property, to now the, the landmark value on it, as soon as it's sold, went from $1 million to $190,000. So this guy, this entity is getting a break after a break after a break after a break. But we, this community, this Thunderbird, this Skagit Orchard are not.
Okay.
So I would just really like you to consider that the whole property does not require a rezone, and I think that we could make an adjustment to make sure that some of this remains public land, guaranteeing that it won't be developed, not a, you know, I'm sorry, what were the words? It was anticipate to remain in its natural state.
All right.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sue. Due to the nature of this being a very formal legal process, what I can offer is we'll have staff give a call and answer some of the questions that you have. So we'll do our very best to get information for you, so. Okay, what more?
It was really hard finding some of the information, so if we can make it more easily available, like navigating some of the things for me to find about this development, like in the letters that we were sent, it kept referring to maps, but we never received any of the maps, and I wasn't able to find them. So if we could be more transparent, it would definitely be more of an use to us as well. And not a, you have till the end of the week to submit something, and then we're making a decision on Monday, because this one kind of went really fast, and I think a lot of people missed the original deadline to make their comments, because they, you know, didn't have enough time to respond or make arrangements. Thank you.
All right, I don't think anyone else is here of record that would speak. All right, we'll go ahead and close the closed-record public hearing for Glenmore LLC, the deal, the old rezone for parcel P-119008. Is there any questions for Rebecca? Any clarifications council has?
Actually, I do have a question, and I, obviously, you know, I don't like to put you on the spot. What is the possibility? I mean, I realize that it's a parcel, a parcel. We have to rezone the whole parcel. It can't be broken. Am I correct in assuming that?
Correct. Our municipal code, as well as many cities' codes, we don't allow split zoning of property. And really, keeping any part of this as public, frankly, it's not appropriate. As the city, of course, as you're well aware, this was sold to a private property owner who now has property rights, and really, he has an existing comprehensive plan designation that does require this to be changed, as staff has indicated. Although, I will note, just to clarify, so the water that you see at the northwest corner of that site, that's not the wetland. That is an existing stormwater facility. The future developer will very likely make that existing facility larger, and I can say that because it's the low spot on the site, so that would make sense. It would cost them a lot of money to try to pump water anywhere else on the site. So that will, that feature will very likely stay there. In addition, there is a very significant wetland that's located on the, I would say, the western one-third to one-half of the site that will limit development significantly in that area. And it's my understanding that that is why the assessor reduced the value of that property. As you're aware, until the assessor receives actual information or studies with regard to the existing conditions of a site, they will assess it at its highest and best use. But when they receive updated information, they will then reassess it. And it's my understanding that that is what's happened with that property, so.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Other questions from council? I'm sorry, Tom, the record is closed, so we are not able to accept comment, and council cannot engage in a dialogue. Tom, please. Tom, I'm going to ask you to please respect this proceeding, and we can't accept comment anymore on this. We just can't. We can't. Thank you. Any other questions from council on this particular item? All right.
I do, you're saying that the wetlands are throughout or just really primarily on the west?
They are primarily on the west. It is not a, what you've heard us call a mosaic wetland, where you end up with like by the east of the college, where you see the wetlands that have lots of little pockets. That is not what this type of wetland is. This is a large wetland that's in that area. And although, as I said, so federal and state law does allow filling of a portion of that wetland. I'm not, it's, it's been too many years since I worked in the private sector to tell you how much that is, but it's not a lot of filling that can occur. So there will be a very large, what we call a native growth protection area, that will be implemented when the subdivision comes through. But I want to be, but again, we're only talking about the rezone, but I just mention that just because I know, I know it's confusing, and I understand that. But we do have laws and regulations that will protect those areas. We have to.
We want to, you know, we want to protect those areas. I think we all do, right?
Yeah, absolutely, and I know, and you, you hear other presentations from me on just those topics. I mean, and it is something that our city has done a really great job with our critical areas ordinance, the way we administer it. We're asked to speak to other cities, you know, about how we do that, just because it's difficult, but we do it.
These are always hard, I mean, I've lived in the same house all my life, on 13th Street. 615th Street was gravel when I was growing up. There was deer in my yard. I mean, if I had it my way, there wouldn't even be a 30th Street. You know, if I, if I was looking back on it, I wouldn't have an apartment building down the street from me. And so I, I feel good about the rezone, obviously, because we have to. But hopefully, if there was a project that moved in there, that, that, I mean, I'm going off of your expertise advice that there are a lot of wetlands on there and obviously federally protected, so. That's all I have to say about that.
Right, any other questions from council? If you choose to take action tonight, it would be ordinance 3834. Or you could choose not to take action tonight, and I'm not sure how that falls, Rebecca?
So I believe, and I'm going to look to our city attorney here, that if you didn't want to take action, you'd have to continue the hearing to, I don't know if that has to be date certain or not.
The hearing's closed, you don't have to, it's a closed-record hearing. This is a quasi-judicial decision based upon the law and the facts. It's not a policy decision of whether or not to allow development in the city of Mount Vernon. You've made that decision when you made a comprehensive plan zoning designation, which now you're seeking consistency to. So the hearing portion has been closed. If you want to continue this to have further deliberations, you certainly may.
Can you talk a little higher?
Sorry, the hearing portion has been closed for public testimony. If you want to continue this to have further deliberations, you certainly may. I'll just ask if we're outside any timelines prescribed by our local land use code to make a decision at this point.
I would have to look at that. I'm not sure, honestly.
Kevin, I just have a quick question that I'm hoping you can answer. Because of the comp plan and how it's not matching up, and the GMA, our hands are tied. We pretty much have to do this, do we not?
You are acting as an arbiter of rights. You need to apply the law objectively and neutrally to the facts, and the law is set forth in your hearing examiner recommendation. Is this compatible with the appropriate zoning surrounding it? And are there public facilities? Is that the only criteria at this point?
Correct, those are the two criteria.
When a project comes in for the zoning that's designated as a permissible use, then you can evaluate, to the codes, those impacts to traffic, whether or not it encroaches upon critical areas, noise, and whether it complies with your design criteria such as off-street parking requirements, designed so the houses look, according to your design criteria, that they are complying with setbacks so they are spaced. But tonight is about the permissible zoning designation, so what land use regulations apply. That's, that's the decision tonight.
I'm sorry, tell me again the ordinance number?
3834.
I'm going to move for approval of ordinance 3834, realizing that this is just the land use. It has nothing to do with a specific project. That is a whole nother piece of this law that we get to deal with.
Okay.
Correct. And the council can always make changes to that development regulations regarding setbacks up until in time somebody applies, invests for a project. And you are welcome, as members of the public, to lobby your legis, your council to changes to development regulations.
We have a project plan in tomorrow.
You know, I'm, I'm sorry. We have legal proceedings, we have documents, we're happy to engage with the public. We can't do it in this quasi-judicial hearing. We can't do that. So we're happy to follow up after the meeting and explain what comes next. We, I can't, I just can't allow it in this meeting at this point. We have to move forward on our process. So there is a motion on the table to accept. If there is no second, this dies. If there's a second, we move on.
I'll second it.
All right. So there's a motion by Mary, a second by Gary. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries, thank you. All right, we have contacts for all the folks that had comments tonight. We're happy to follow up with you tomorrow and talk about what the next steps are and how you can be engaged, so. All right, item E is the approval of the agreement with public sector personnel consultants, and I'm going to ask Erin Kater, our human resources director, to come up for this item. Thanks.
Hello, good evening. I'm here tonight to recommend that council authorize the mayor to enter into a professional service agreement with public sector personnel consultants to conduct a classification and compensation study for our non-represented and T-MSR represented positions. As you are aware, the city's not conducted a study in over 20 years. We have out-of-date job descriptions, we don't have proper FLSA classifications, and our salary schedules are inequitable and inconsistent. We put out an RFP back in June. We received six proposals. We reviewed them, evaluated them on the responsiveness to our request, on completing studies of like jurisdictions, whether or not they could help us maintain the program, and then the cost. And so public sector personnel consultants was the most comprehensive proposal that was provided to us. The cost is $75,000. They will warranty their implementation for a year and provide us with programming to maintain the implementation into the future. Any questions?
Any questions for Erin on this? All right.
Seeing that there are no questions, yeah, I just think this is really good. It's needed. Yeah, you mentioned two decades or 20 years' worth of this not happening, so it's quite a while. So, yeah, with that in mind, I'll motion for council authorize the mayor to enter into professional service agreement with public sector personnel consultants for the purpose of conducting a classification and compensation study.
All right, motion by one? I'll second. Second by Melissa. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Item F is the approval of funding proposal and amendment of the 2021 city budget, and ask Doug Velaskier, our finance director, to come up for this item.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. So tonight, staff is requesting council approval of the American Rescue Plan Act funding proposal in ordinance number 3835, amending the 2021 city budget to account for this funding. So as you know, on May 10th, 2021, the U.S. Department of Treasury issued its guidance for qualified uses of the $350 billion local fiscal recovery funds. The final allocation to the city of Mount Vernon is $9,053,048. Funding must be obligated by December 31st, 2024, and expended by December 31st, 2026. So what can these funds be used for? They can be used for responding to the COVID-19 pandemic, covering costs incurred from the public health emergency, replacing lost, delayed, or decreased revenues due to COVID-19, addressing the negative economic impacts on local businesses and nonprofits, and making necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. So after reading all the guidance and the FAQs, the mayor suggested guiding principles, which falls as this. The effects of the pandemic will not be over this year, and have highlighted that toll disasters can take on a community, so funds should be used to build resiliency. City services have been impacted or delayed due to the pandemic. Funds should be used to support and expedited return to pre-pandemic level of customer services. ARPA funding should be used to improve systems or issues that have been exasperated or revealed due to the pandemic, most specifically an underinvestment in the information services department and general facilities, and then other spending allowed for broadband, water, and sewer systems. There's also been a collaboration being done through this process. There's been monthly meetings with the Skagit County government, Skagit, and other Skagit cities and towns. There's been consultation with the Chamber of Commerce and eDesk for finding out what the needs are for the community, and also- and also data for previous efforts from community action to find out the needs for the citizens. City Council approved an agreement with the U.S. Department of Treasury for the acceptance of this funding. The city received 50% or $4.5 million of the allocated amount and is scheduled to receive the remaining 50% in May of 2022. So tonight, a 2021 budget amendment is required to properly record and spend any funding from 2021. And then the following years will be budgeted during the normal budget process. So with that, part of the budget amendment and to a better account and track these funds, the city is requesting to create a new special revenue fund entitled the American Rescue Plan Act Fund, or Fund 121. So after previous discussions with city council, the city also requests revenue and expense authority of the $4.5 million for this spending plan for 2021. Included in this is the staff salary for employees, time spent on COVID-related activities, revenue replacement, such as what we discuss in the department of, or excuse me, with library and parks department. IT is replacing outdated equipment and applications for efficiencies and also improving telecommunication, telecommuting capabilities, and also the inclusion of two FTEs. Fiber optic system to replace some, or to increase your equipment there, and then also to increase 1.5 FTEs in that area. TV-10 is for upgrades for better use of remote communicate, communicating, like in council chambers here tonight. General facilities, the city hall HVAC, and then also the council chambers, court HVAC, the air conditioning system that we have issues with right now. And then also to support the backlog due to COVID in the court system, we're asking for money for prosecuting attorney contract, and then also the increase in the public defense contract. Communication to our residents, as has been done, we will continue by doing Community Information Magazine. And then also some service level restoration for parks and for the public way right of ways to bring those back up to the service where they were. And then the remaining $2,113,000 will just be, stay in as a reserve in the fund balance to be carried forward into future years. So as previously discussed, I'm also, we're also asking for council approval of the following positions. For Information Services Division, one FTE for Information Technology Implementation Manager, and one FTE for a network support specialist. In the fiber optics, we're looking for 1.5 FTE for fiber optic technicians assistance. That's bringing our part-time employee full-time and then bringing in one more new position for that. So unless, any questions? With that, staff is requesting council approval of the American Rescue Plan Act funding proposal and ordinance number 3835, amending the 2021 city budget and accounting for this funding.
Any questions for Doug on this?
If I don't have any questions, I'll make a motion that council approve the ARPA Act funding proposal and an ordinance to amend the 2021 city budget to account for this funding. And the ordinance is 3835.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion by Melissa and a second by one. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Doug. All right. That completes our regularly scheduled agenda items. I'll ask the city attorney if there's a need for an executive session this evening.
There is, Mayor. I'd invite the mayor and members of city council to enter into an executive session to discuss with legal counsel matters related into enforcement, action, litigation, or potential litigation to which the city, the governing body, or a member acting in its official capacity is or is likely to become a party. When public knowledge regarding such discussion will likely result in either adverse legal or adverse financial consequence to the city, time for executive session is 40 minutes. No final action after. And this would be pursuant to RCW 4230, 110, subsection 1a.
All right. Thank you. With that, we'll be adjourned at 8:56.